Give us a brief explanation of what the impact possibly the BLM. Just tell us briefly what is going on here and what damage could be done to BLM property, county property. Just trying to let the man on the phone know what's going on.
Well, hold on.
Hold on.
That's a separate conversation. Let me hurry.
Yeah, let's get it, let's get it.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to obviate the gentleman on the phone.
That's, that's good, but.
Okay, we won't do that.
Let me just read the, uh, the title then to the right.
We'll do it later, okay.
Because this is all inclusive to whether it's a subcontractor or not.
Yeah, no, this is countywide on.
Yeah, this is countywide, so it's not that. This does not single out just dinner jerks. This is.
If your equipment's on the road.
This is anybody.
Do what I.
Okay, I just was trying to, let's move forward.
Yeah, let me just read the title real quick, Chairman, and we can move off as a gentleman. I'm gonna read the title and it's the right.
Okay. Michael, read the title.
The proposed ordinance regulating the use of certain heavy equipment on county roads. Requiring a road maintenance agreement with the county prior to the operation of certain heavy equipment on county roads. Conposing criminal and civil penalties for offenders who comply with this ordinance, adding the separability clause. Uh, and then Travis, if you want to get with us with any suggestions on how to make this more friendly so the ranch community knows how this can affect them, or how we can figure that out. Okay.
And then, but this, I would also like to add, or, you know, that other government entities such as SNWA fall under this, you know.
Absolutely.
That, you know, I ain't gonna put up with, you know, them being excluded out from every, everything we pass, so.
No, the ordinance itself has to be neutral to, I mean, we have to set some of those guidelines that apply. It doesn't matter whether you're hauling hay, water, oil, gold, whether it applies equally to everyone. It's more about the way the vehicle and whether you're gonna have an agreement in place to make sure it doesn't happen, so. All right, that's all we have.
Okay, that was, anybody else with, uh, any comment on this, uh, this item? Okay, that was just the first reading. We'll be back with the other rest of it, so we're gonna move on. We'll get back, we're gonna recess the county commission meeting. We're gonna, uh, open the, the nine AM fire commission meeting, but, uh, public comment. Is there any public comment in the fire commission meeting, either on the phone or in public? We're open for public comment in the fire commission meeting. Anything on the phone, Mike? Hearing none, saying anything in public, in the public, in the building, George, you guys, you did.
You've not given me an answer on the other stuff. Do you want me to repeat myself? I can do that.
No, no, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, item one on page two. Item one is a discussion update on fire district progress. Brett, come on.
Good morning.
Mike.
Good morning, Brett. Got my backup stuff.
Yes, sir.
On top of that stuff, the firefighter one class should be wrapping up this weekend, but the state of the room, is this weekend or next? It's left there on a date. Uh, September fifth, we'll be starting an advanced EMT class for countywide folks. Monday, I took the ambulance down to Doc Water, so it is down there in place. They've got some paperwork to do, yes, with their driver only program, so they get it up and running. Should be probably about two weeks and they'll be ready to go. But other than that, I don't know if you guys got questions?
Anybody got anything for Brett?
So good to meet you. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, nothing else being said, I want, so we're gonna go to item two. Item two is discussion for possible action, the approval of a contract with O'Flaherty Plumbing and Heating for the McGill Fire Station Residence. PWP White Pine twenty twenty dash three three five. What do we got going here? Do we have the bid or is it?
I just received those, um, when I was on vacation and I put them on the agenda, but it looks like just a technicality, um, to approve the contract following prior approval of, of awarding them a bid for the western project.
Correct, this is just to prove the contract.
Okay, can you use the dollar number on the contract?
I cannot.
It didn't have a dollar amount in it or else I would have included in there.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we had this at the last meeting, right? On, on the, we awarded the bid to O'Flaherty?
I think the meeting before that.
Okay, all right, that being said, anybody got any questions on the contract that we have with O'Flaherty Plumbing and Heating for the McGill Fire Station? Any com, any commissioner? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Who to approve?
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion?
What's the dollar amount?
As pretty as he stands in the last meeting.
Yeah, the bid was awarded and they were open and the dollar amount was there. If you need that clarification, get it from the clerk's office. Okay.
And just for clarification, if I might, Mr. Chairman, it does state right in this contract that part of the contract becomes the proposal by the contractors of which you awarded it at, is part of this new contract.
Anyone else got a comment on this before we have a motion and a second? Motion by Shane, second by Ian to approve. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate. Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of the requests from Garden State Fireworks for the fireworks display on the KKC Field near McGill on September sixth, twenty twenty, around nine PM in recognition of Labor Day. I'm a little confused on this KKC field. I think that's small park, isn't it?
Well, I'm not sure. Uh, my name's Michael Couch from the Department of State Fireworks. Um, I do have an address for the shoot site. It's, uh, right below the old car wash, but I do have a physical address.
Down on the flat.
Yep, yeah, it's down there. We have my owner's permission from Mr. Collins in Rio Tinto, Tenacott. I have a little speech here if I could.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so, good morning, everyone. My name's Michael Couch from White Pine High School, a class of two thousand eight graduate. Site manager at Spring Valley Wind Farm and White Pine County's newest fire technician operating in the Garden State. I wanted to briefly introduce myself to the board and fire council and go over some info presented in this package here. If there are any documents missing that you'd like to see presented out for the future. I included all state local laws, the supporting documentation needed to take the show. State metadata has not yet held out the hard copies of licenses, but license under is there if you would like to verify the ability. Like I said earlier, we received my owner's permission. We have also coordinated with the McGill Fire Department for a dedicated support crew specifically for the show. In addition, the fire department in Garden State will place two screen numbers with a fire crew in strategic locations as fire squads who will be equipped with large fire extinguishers while the show is being shot. And we also currently hold an insurance certificate for approximately five times the state minimum to pardon for this event. That's a true relationship.
I have a question. So you, you just went to the McGill Volunteer Fire and you didn't contact the county fire chief?
No, I wanted to make sure that I had the permit in place first because the way the law states is I have to get the permit from the county board of commissioners first. And I did reach out to McGill Fire Department and I planned on reaching out to whoever you guys requested to be notified of the event. Because I've looked at our permits in the past before and you guys have named out several departments that we need to notify, so.
Have you filled out the proper work for the COVID, uh, through LEAP? The permits because of the social distancing and, and all the stuff that's required right now by the state as far as, uh, I don't know where you're, I see where you're setting up, but how close are people getting? Is there any social distancing? There's, there's a permit required, I believe, uh, through, through, uh, the COVID nineteen through LEAP that you go through a process and get approval and we've got no problem with it, but, uh, just to go ahead and approve, uh, to go ahead and approve the fireworks display when we've canceled many other events. But we've had other events that are going through those proper channels and I just don't see this where, uh, this has gone through the proper channels.
Mr. Chairman, we have to be clear what, um, Chakot's role is in this. He's a, he's been contacted by, I believe, the McGill Town Council that wants the fireworks, right?
Yes, sir.
They're the ones or organizing the event, need to comply with all the COVID stuff. And they're the ones that we're gonna be discussing along with other county events later on in the agenda at eleven thirty or whatever it is. This is simply to approve that, to have, it's just part of the permitting process. To have fireworks and not fireworks has nothing to do with social distancing. They could cancel the events all completely and still have fireworks like we did on the Fourth of July for the community to enjoy. So it's really, he, um, this contractor who's lighting the fireworks off does not have to comply with, uh, the COVID permitted, okay? It's really, it's, and then we, in this person, we need to educate if he's gonna be the contractor in, in our county to always coordinate with Brett first because that's the ultimate authority. The McGill Fire, well, the fire department has no authority and the county can do anything. And so that's just reverse flip flop on that. And then we go to McGill Volunteers to make sure of your staff and that's with coordination with the fire chief. Yes, thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Angelopoulos, McGill Town Council. The, uh, the picnic, the street dance has all been canceled because of COVID. This is the only thing that we're doing. They'll have the fire department down there, they're down there. It's, it's down on the tailings, pretty much below my house. So I, I mean, that's, they're through on the fire.
There shouldn't be a problem. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous, okay. Item four.
Thank you.
Item four, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for July twenty twenty, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and those reports are in your backup materials. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'd ask for your approval.
Anyone got any questions on that?
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item five is a discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within funds that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust or approve grants slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
And again, that material is in your backup, uh, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer it. It's basically when I budgeted for your capital improvements, uh, the, through the fire district, I put them under equipment over five thousand and they should have been in capital improvements, so I just made that correction.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item six, discussion of possible action, approval of the minutes from the fire commission meeting, the special meeting, July twenty second, twenty twenty. Any additions, subtractions or corrections? Hearing none, all for a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Last item in the fire commission meeting is public comment. Any public comment on the fire commission meeting? Hearing none, we will close. Anybody on the phone? Okay. Here and that will, uh, close the fire commission meeting and reopen the county commission meeting. And the next item on there is the nine forty-five, and we write on that number for, uh, the sheriff's office, so I think we can go right ahead. Scott, you're the chairman of this.
We still have four minutes.
He's got four minutes? I'll look at that, okay. All right, so we'll just wait. So I have a request by Desi and she has several items that I think we can get through pretty quick. And she asked if she could be brought in, uh, a little earlier. And so they're on page five and then kind of run through these real quick, like, and get them approved. Page five, item two, under Desiree Marson, Social Services Director. Item A is discussion for possible action, gratification of the CSBG grant. You texted me this line.
I am. Good morning.
All right, so, uh, just, uh, gratification of the CSBG grant award for CARES Fund, CARES Act funding in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars with no match required.
This is just our CSBG funding that does all of our emergency services and this is the extra funding we got prepared.
Okay, for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Shane, motion by Lori, second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, item B, discussion for possible action, the approval of the ESG grant award in the amount of ten thousand dollars with a required counter match of ten thousand from the director's wage.
And this one is ten thousand dollars for, um, emergency services.
Any question? Number for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item C, discussion for possible action, the approval of the WASP, WSAP grant award in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred, fifty ninety dollars and forty cents with no required counter match.
And this one is emergency services for our office as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item D, uh, discussion for possible action, the approval of NDOT five three one one grant award in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars with no required counter match.
This is from End Office, what we used to operate ELEBUS. Um, normally we have a match, we don't this year.
Very good. Okay, any question? Number for a motion to approve?
Salute.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item D, page six, discussion for possible action, the approval to accept the AGSD grant award in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with a required accounting match of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is in kind from the director's wages.
And this is also to operate ELEBUS?
Any questions? Number for a motion to approve?
Salute.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item F, discussion for possible action, the approval to explore options for providing ELEBUS services in-house. What that would look like, including where it will be housed.
So right now, ELEBUS is, um, was being run by a contractor for us. And with COVID, they did a suspension of service and we brought it in-house and we're operating at twenty-three percent. They did not come back on the date that they, that they were wanting to. So with having the extra money this year from End Office, not having a match, I wanted to explore looking at bringing it, bringing it in-house and keeping it how we have had it. So I worked with Elizabeth and Mike to find out a look at some options to do that. With the money you just approved, we have more than enough in the budget, correct, Elizabeth?
Yes.
For, to bring it in-house. And what I would like to do, right now we're operating at twenty-five percent and I have one driver and one dispatcher. Normally, we have three drivers and a dispatcher, but to keep it to where we can operate where we need to, but not put us in an issue, I would like to have two drivers and a dispatcher. And then, um, where were we wanting to look to house?
Was the, I thought you had discussed. With Bill at the road shop, the road shop.
Which would make sense because that's where we do the gas and the maintenance for our vehicles.
I think this item is to explore the options and I think you kind of laid it out for us, but are there any other options you have or anything else wanna, or is this, we're just exploring the options, right?
Yeah, it looks like there's approval on GH and I for.
Okay, so.
But I have a question.
Okay.
Desi, going down the road, are you looking to do this, uh, long-term?
Yes.
So the grants would be going to you?
They come to us anyway and then, and part of it is I pay a contractor's wage.
Okay, so this is.
So instead, it, it would just.
So it's not gonna show the guys any grant coming in?
No, it's not. No, I work at End Office to make sure we were all completely, we picked up enough with all of our grants and they were okay with this. It's hard to find a contractor out where we live that wants to operate at a price that we can afford, honestly, so.
Okay, I'm gonna read this as a discussion item because like Travis says, GH and I are gonna kind of go into detail. So is that okay with the rest of the commission to make this discussion item? And we'll move on to, uh, item.
No. I think, I, I think, I don't see any, really any need to bypass it. I think, uh, we're already running it and, uh, and, and this is a change that seems to me to make sense. I mean, right now, we're getting the grant, we're paying a contractor, the contractor's paying these wages out and then they're taking a cut above that. They're making money.
Right.
That money's gonna stay with us now, so it's gonna give us an opportunity to have more money in the fund and, and maybe operate a better service. As long as, as we've explored everything, Bill's comfortable with, with housing the, the buses and we're already in operation. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't just hammer down and roll with the, with the plan as, as proposed.
Absolutely. Just get a motion to bring the bus service in-house, be clean.
Move to make the bus service in-house.
Motion by Travis, second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Shane.
And.
Item G.
Desi, my hat's up to you to take this on. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Page six, item G, discussion for possible action, the approval to terminate the contract with Coach USA and White Pine County for the operation of the ELEBUS due to Coach USA's failure to fulfill the terms of the contract.
Yeah, in my review, their performance are material breach. I mean, whether they could help it or not.
Yeah.
It's just, it doesn't work, so.
Motion, motion to approve termination of the contract.
Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item H, discussion for possible action, the approval of the budget for the ELEBUS.
Oh, thank you. That material is in your backup and we have gone ahead and, uh, Desi and I have worked on this budget together. What she feels her needs are, she has investigated the different things that are required for this program. And that material's in your backup. It's showing two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, um, to run that. And you just approved grants in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars to run this program. So you have adequate funds to, um, look at this.
Okay, any question, any questions of Elizabeth? Number for a motion to approve the budget?
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane, second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item I, discussion for possible action, the approval from post for three full-time employees to operate ELEBUS.
And that's just the two drivers and a dispatcher.
And that's all part of the budget too?
Correct.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis, second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for putting it in.
Thank you, Desi.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go back to, uh, let's see, around page.
Liquor license.
Page two, item D, nine forty-five, liquor board meeting, Scott.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just clarification from this term. The applicant on action item number one has pulled her application, so do I just need a motion to remove that from the agenda? How would you like us to proceed?
Yeah, just gonna motion the table.
Okay, um.
I'll make that motion, motion to table, item one.
A second.
Want favor?
Aye.
Okay, action item number two, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes from June tenth, two thousand twenty, liquor board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're canceled ahead. We're gonna go to, uh, go to page four. Item two, like, items from elective officials and department heads, county commission, Richard Howe, chairman. Item A, discussion for possible action, the approval of a certificate for Shawna Sampson for her retirement in appreciation for her years of service.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Shane?
You guys talked about that she served this county for twenty-eight years.
Twenty, I was, I was just gonna ask how many years.
Twenty-eight years.
That's awesome.
If you, do you wanna make a comment right here, Mike, for your own?
Yeah, absolutely. Just, um, you know, what's really interesting is there's a, there's a lot of unsung public heroes that just quietly go to work every day and dedicate majority of their lives to serving the community. The community has no idea. And she served justice, she worked hard and sometimes attorneys get the, uh, the quotes in the paper, but behind every attorney is that staff that gets it happening. There's no way we can do our job without our support staff. And, uh, she is a public hero and I just appreciate her service, her dedication and professionalism. I'm really excited to see, kinda, her, kinda enjoy her life and her next phase of employment and education. Just, uh, very glad to see her be involved.
And I think the entire commission echoes your, your comments and she is appreciated and, um, just thank you, Shawna. And she's a friend and she's also done a great job and I'm looking forward to giving her this certificate.
Yes, I know every time that I was in the office, she was always helpful and helpful with anything.
Did we take an action item? Did you get a motion?
I don't know if I heard a vote.
Yo, we did a motion and a second, we just need a vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Go to item, uh, page five, item D, Burton Hilton. Discussion for possible action to authorize the county assessor to purchase White Pine County APN zero zero four dash one seven one dash zero eight, zero zero four dash one seven one dash one six, zero zero four dash one seven one dash two one, zero zero four dash one seven one dash two two. These are the old sheds north of McGill for delinquent taxes in the amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars, up to two thousand dollars at the county treasurer's tax sale for future abatement. And direct the White Pine County Treasurer and Assessor to transfer said property from Treasurer's trustee to White Pine County. And it was self-explanatory and I, I talked to Elizabeth. These are the old sheds as you come into McGill from the north and you head through McGill. Those old dilapidated sheds are on the right, many are broken down and not even used.
Yes, so these parcels are up for tax, um, tax sale. And, and here's the theory, talking to Burton behind this is the community in McGill demands that we clean up that community. And we clean up and abate nuisances. One of the ways to do that is acquire properties and they come up so we can do what we want with them, level, clean them up and use that nuisance abatement fund to fund the projects. Now, there are, there's only a handful of parcels compared to seven or so parcels in there, but as they come up and we keep acquiring them before too long, look, a, a flat, leveled, clean ground looks better than, than a safety, public safety issue. So it's a small cost. We're gonna bid on it at the auction. That's why there's a price range on here. And, uh, hopefully satisfy that debt the lowest.
Elizabeth, you're trying them?
Yes, I'd just like to mention also that I talked to Burton about this and one of the things we have after we did the abatement of the old ELE city garage next to the admin building is we still have funds left through CDVG and the Slum Blight grant. And we did talk to CDVG, uh, about using those remaining funds to go ahead and abate this property and they said that they felt that this would be an appropriate thing. We do have to turn it into some type of usable public area and the idea would be to make a parking area there um, for either crossroad truckers that need to pull off or, um, community events or whatever. But we do have that availability of funding to help start that abatement process.
I have to barely improve the view of the step-toe valley.
Oh, absolutely. When you first coming into town, absolutely.
Uh, that's, and this is to keep on your radar, we should probably have Bill come in and discuss in the future agenda um, what abatement projects we wanna look at for this fiscal year.
Anybody have more questions?
I have one question. So we do use the, the CDVG money to go ahead and abate this and we have to turn it into a public use area. Is, is that preclude us in the future from selling that parcel? Should a developer come and, and be interested in that?
I will follow up on that. I'm not sure how long we have to hold it in.
That, that would be my, my concern because my, my main thing is I'd like to see that become available, uh, for, for public use. And the problem we have so many times with these, these pieces of property on the tax abatement list is, is they just end up being picked up by somebody else and, and the, the cost to clean that up is so much that it, it never changes. And then down the road, it ends up back on the tax abatement list because they can't improve it, they quit paying tax on it and we just roll through that cycle. So I'd like to see us develop this into a piece of property that may be able to be used for development in the future.
Anyone else? Uh, what this is, is just to authorize the assessor to purchase it. Are you okay with that, Shane?
Yeah, and, and.
It doesn't say where the funds are supposed to come from. We'll get it and then we'll figure out whether we can use CDVG without having those issues, perpetual issues.
And that'll be, that'll be a separate issue that we'll handle, correct?
We'll come back before you say, hey, um, we can or not.
And when you're deciding how to handle it. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is first number on the town?
Do you guys have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I was just heading out the door to come down and I heard you guys were starting to talk about this, so. Uh, I have some other maps. I did wanna let you know, there are three other properties in that area that are, uh, delinquent on taxes, particularly the biggest one. Uh, I don't know if your backup there shows the parcel of the two, three. So this can be part of the bigger project, but you just can't use any of those things for anything else. Um, so if somebody were to pick it up, they still wouldn't be able to do anything with it because the parcels are so cattywacka there in McGill and some of those areas. So, yeah, you know, we can cobble some of these together with what Elizabeth's talking about. We can clean up that area and I think it would make it a lot nicer and more usable in the future. Whether we consolidate the, all the parcels into one and make it so that we can actually do something.
Okay, anybody got any questions on Burton on this? Okay, uh. Okay, I would look for a motion to authorize the assessor to purchase the county properties.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, unanimous. Just move right down here, Scott. Discussion for possible action, approval of the quarterly in custody debt reports.